Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting for January 11, 2010. Happy New Year to everyone. First of all, as I always do, thank the San Bruno Garden Club for providing the floral arrangement for our meetings. Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Item number two, I'm still under roll call, Pledge of Allegiance. I would like our city attorney to lead us in the pledge, please.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, announcements, briefly, and this is just a precursor of, I hope, what will come positively. I heard from Jerry Hill's office this afternoon at Assemblyman, AB 50 is emergency legislation he has in the state legislature regarding the taxability of the PG&E money that was given and also capital gains tax and properties that were possibly purchased in the future by PG&E. So, he said it's very encouraging that that legislation will go forward positively. So, that's about all I can say with that, anything definitive. Presentations. Tonight we have a presentation from Christopher Moore, Executive Director of HART. Christopher?
Thank you, Mayor Ruane, and honorable members of the city council. I appreciate your taking the time to have an update from the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust, the HART of San Mateo County. I live and work just across the border in South San Francisco, so it's good to be here in my neighboring city. You have the printout of the PowerPoint, so I'll just go fairly quickly through it. HART's mission is to raise funds from public and private sources to meet critical housing needs in San Mateo County. Our goal is to increase the housing supply, and we do that by private contributions as well as public dues, including from the City of San Bruno and grants and revenue from other sources. HART is organized as a joint powers authority, and we do have all 20 cities plus the county of San Mateo in the JPA. And unusual for most JPA's, it's governed by a public-private board of directors, so we bring a broad range of stakeholders to the table, including the faith community, banking, real estate, nonprofit service providers, and other community members, chambers of commerce. To date, I'm proud to say we've helped fund 800 homes, either constructed, renovated, or purchased, and we just did that on January 3rd with our 800th home, when we closed a homebuyer loan for a family that was a first-time homebuyer here in the county. And we've invested $8.4 million so far. And one of the advantages of HART and the JPA model is that we're able to go after funding sources that might be hard for any one jurisdiction to get. So, we got $2 million of state housing trust fund money in 2003, and then again in 2009 with some of the bond programs they have. So, by acting together, we're able to bring more capital to the county. The other thing about HART is we leverage funding from other sources, so the total development costs of the developments we've invested in is over $200 million, and that means more than 20 to 1 ratio of funding from other sources. It also means that many people being put to work in our community to build the housing or to help our home, our workforce become homeowners. Briefly, we have three different loan programs: permanent financing of affordable rental apartments, short-term financing to get either rental or ownership development going, and homebuyer assistance. I think the information's in the packet, so I don't need to go into a lot of detail. I did want to point out that the Village at the Crossing here in San Bruno was one of our very first investments, 228 affordable apartments for seniors, and those ladies are residents there. And one of them has become a part-time volunteer with our office, because she wants to give back to the community, so we really appreciate that. We also helped some senior housing in Daly City and Tressal Glen, which opened just last year, at the Colma BART station that also has a childcare center on site, which we're excited about. So, it's really the model of transit-oriented development right next to BART with those services for the families. And then we've also invested in a new development moving forward in South San Francisco that will break ground, we hope, in a couple months and put more people back to work as well. Our revolving loan fund has some short-term loans. We also put some money into the Colma BART development there. We helped renovate some apartments in Pacifica. And then there's another new transit-oriented development on the Grand Boulevard in San Mateo, Peninsula Station. I would like to say another, a little bit more about our homebuyer program. We call it opening doors in our community. As you know, things changed a lot in 2008 with the changes in the financial markets and the ownership market. It used to be pretty easy to get a loan, too easy, but some would say we've tightened up a little too much in the market, and it's hard for people, even if they have good credit and employment, to find a loan in the marketplace. So, we have a 5% down payment program, and we partner with a credit union that works in Santa Clara and San Mateo County, Mary West, and we put in a second loan to help make that more affordable for the family moving in. People must either live or work in San Mateo County, and they need to have decent credit, because we're not trying to make risky loans, we want to make solid investments. And here is the Ruiz family. They live in San Bruno, and he actually was able to buy the home next to where he grew up, because he was hoping to stay in the community where he grew up and have that multi-generational family, and it just worked out perfectly. They were able to buy next door to mom and dad and grandma and grandpa, so we're very happy about that. And all told, we've helped three families purchase homes here in San Bruno. We very much appreciate the city's ongoing investment in our work, and thank you for your time.
Any questions of Christopher?
Through the chair.
Irene.
Christopher, if anyone wants to get ahold of you or see if they qualify for the program, how do they do that? Just through HART?
Our website is thebestplacehartofsmc.org. You can also go to slash open for "Opening Doors in Our Community," describes the program in detail. Actually, one other thing I meant to say early on is, of course, we're following the governor's proposal to eliminate redevelopment agencies very carefully, because that would really impact the ability of cities to do affordable housing. So, just wanted to put that out there to the degree that San Bruno gets involved, really the League of Cities, we'd like to help out.
All right, Chris, that's what I was going to ask you preliminarily, and it might be too early, but did you, any indications other than redevelopment funding that would affect you from the state budget?
Not that I've been able to find out so far, but, you know, it's only been a day, and that is the big headline item, the redevelopment.
Yeah, you guys, you're doing wonderful work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number five, review of the agenda. Okay. Approval of the minutes, regular city council meeting December 14, 2010, and special city council meeting December 20, 2010. Any errors, changes, omissions? Seeing none, they'll stand approved as submitted. Item number seven, consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implement and earlier council action that may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. Any action or changes in the consent calendar?
Through the chair.
Irene.
I'd like to pull 7F, please.
All right, pull item 7F. Anything else, or action?
Move to approve the rest.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve the remainder of the consent calendar on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item F is adopt a resolution rejecting all bids for the Glenview and Cunningham water tank retrofit project. Irene?
I mainly like, if Clara would mind expanding on this a little bit. It is a tank, a water tank that is crucial to our water supply, and I know we want to get this done as soon as possible. So, can you tell us what the plans are for what's going to happen next, and what can we look forward to?
Good evening. The department is equally aware how important this project is for the safety of the whole city. This is a seismic retrofit of two of our water tanks. It is our intent to put together another bid document in the shortest time possible and to go out for a new bid process. And based on the information available to us, I feel very confident that this second time, the department and the city will be much more successful to implement this project than how was with this first process. There were many reasons why the first disintent wasn't successful, and certainly our second bid package will be much more flexible and will give more alternatives available for the market. And I feel very comfortable that the project will go to the implementation phase very soon.
Okay, great. Thank you. I just want to make sure we're going forward with this as soon as possible. Thank you.
Through the chair. Just while you're here, is there any, it's not clear in the staff report why the two are together. There's two different projects, and we could, you know, with the amount of money we have, we could fund one, quite possibly.
Absolutely. Really, the only, initially why these two projects was coupled together was more from strategic reason that was the thinking at that time, that having two tanks in the same project then will be a, from a economical point of view, the city will receive a better bid. Now, this is a very big difference between the estimated cost for Tank One and Tank Three. Now, we'll be, our intent to go out right away for Tank One and to have that project started as soon as possible, and then to go out for Tank Three, which is a much more complex project for, as soon as possible, but separate for Tank Three.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else?
Move, oh, sorry. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve item 7F. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings, notices have been published, posted, mailed. We have no public hearings this evening. Public comment on items not on the agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this form to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council under public comment?
My name is Alan Lubke. I live on Fleetwood Drive. Honorable mayor, council members, Happy New Year. Let's start off our meetings on the right foot this year. Just as there's a little note here that says on this speaker's platform, to move up to the microphone so that you can be heard, I ask that all of you do the same. I understand you've been asked to do that. Your microphones should be about this distance from your faces so that you can be heard. Now, you don't realize it while you're sitting here, but when you're on TV, you can't hear some of you at all, especially those of you that are soft-spoken. Number two, I ask you to introduce all of our speakers. We're asked to introduce ourselves up here. Please introduce the members of the, of the staff that come to speak. We don't know who they are. On television, we have no chance to ask the question. If I'm here, I'll ask, and I wish you would do this in a clear and distinct manner. I'd like to speak about the tree. The tree at 2570 Cotelpaway that I have repeatedly asked to have agendized on why that tree was cut down. I'd like to know why it seemed to be a convenience to cut it down when PG&E was in the area and they had available saws. Why hadn't it been cut down earlier? I was stopped on the street by the Swinks who live on Sequoia, and they said, "Mr. Lubke, aren't you a taxpayer?" I said, "Yes, I am." Well, they said, "But hasn't the city council gotten back to you on your repeated requests to, for an explanation as to why that tree was cut down and when a new one will be planted?" I said, "No. Yes, I am a taxpayer." Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the city council in public comment? All right, we'll move right to item number 10, conduct of business. Receive oral report and review status of local emergency related to the Glenview fire area and adopt a resolution continuing the declaration of local emergency. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This item is a continuation of previous actions similar to this one, where the city council has continued the original declaration of emergency, which occurred immediately, was immediately entered following the September 9 tragic explosion and fire that's continuing to impact our community. The purpose of the continuation of the local emergency and the resolution in front of you tonight is to allow the city to proceed with necessary actions, particularly projects, to respond to the various aspects of the disaster without completing the usual requirements of competitive bidding. At this time, as I've told you before, I do not anticipate that there will be additional need to actually implement the authorities within the authorization that is provided by the resolution of local emergency. And I'm also anticipating that the next time I talk to you, it will be about the completion or the discontinuation of the emergency situation. We have continued the local emergency process and the regular, every two weeks, or rather every 30 days, re-establishment of the resolution declaring the local emergency for the purpose of assuring that the weather conditions, and particularly the intense rainy season, does not adversely impact our ability to complete necessary restorative repair activities, particularly in the mouth of the Crestmore Canyon adjacent to the Glenview neighborhood and the explosion site. So, at this point, we are looking for your action consistent with that, that you've taken on previous, several previous occasions now, to continue the local emergency by adopting this resolution. Thank you.
Questions of the city manager? Action.
Through the chair. I'd like to introduce the resolution, continuing declaration of local emergency.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item 10B, receive city council donation subcommittee report and provide direction to staff regarding donations for the Glenview fire area.
I'd be happy to give a very quick overview, and then I'm sure that the two council members who compies the donation the subcommittee has appointed by Mayor Ruane are well-prepared to discuss this issue in more detail with the city council. In very short summary, this afternoon, we distributed, and we have on the counter to this meeting room tonight, a memorandum which outlines the recommendation that I believe the subcommittee wishes to present to you tonight, that was, worked through the subcommittee after a couple of meetings by that group, and then the conduct of a public meeting, which happened last Wednesday night on January 5th, for the purpose of discussing with the public and receiving public input about the process and the policy that should be utilized in a recommendation to the full city council, related to the distribution of funds received by the city, and I say that deliberately received, as opposed to solicited by the city. I would, I would call to the council and the public's attention the fact that the city was the recipient of a large number of donations, some very small, some very large, over the last several months since September 9. We appreciate, as I believe the residents of our community appreciate, the generosity and the compassion that those donations represent, and the desire of persons literally all over the world to assist in the community and the individual family recovery from this terrible and tragic event that has impacted San Bruno and the Glenview neighborhood in particular. As the memorandum points out, the city, regardless of how funds are received, has a fiduciary responsibility, both to the individuals and the organizations who provided the contributions, as well as to the community, to take a deliberative and responsible approach to evaluating how those funds should be utilized. As I mentioned, the mayor appointed a subcommittee of the city council, and that subcommittee has conducted a public meeting, which was very well-attended. I estimated at least 75 persons attended that meeting and participated very actively in a discussion that occurred over approximately in an hour and a half timeframe. We recorded comments that were received in person on flip charts, and we've transcribed those and attached those to the memo you have in front of you. We also solicited, or rather, the subcommittee solicited comments from attendant, attendees at the meeting that were submitted in writing. We have transcribed each of those comments as well, and it goes on, as you see in your material in front of you for several pages. I think that the input from the audience can be very simply summarized, and that is that the overwhelming majority of individuals attending this meeting and voicing their comments supported a expedient distribution of the funds to the residents of the Glenview neighborhood, particularly those who have been most directly and devastatingly impacted by the, by the explosion and the fire. The recommendation that the subcommittee committed to producing for you tonight is in front of you. I'm going to stop in just a moment and allow the subcommittee members to detail the, to provide the details of the recommendation in front of you tonight. I would just say that the city council, as we have on several occasions informed the public generally, has the authority, among the five of you, to determine what is the process and the policy to be used in, to distribute or utilize these funds. The fact that you have a recommendation in front of you is essentially nothing more than a recommendation and the start for, for you to determine how you, as the entire city council, wish to proceed. I can assure you that the subcommittee has done a very deliberate and thorough job of evaluating both the community input and interests, as well as a variety of other issues associated with what is the right thing to do and how best to do it. Staff stands ready to accept your direction, and we are prepared to move forward aggressively following your decision. We do not have a resolution on your agenda tonight to, that details a specific course of action, but we would ask your indulgence that we will come back so that at the next meeting with a resolution to clearly and concisely document the specifics of your action, primarily for the purposes of our record. You have the ability tonight to make a final decision, provide that direction to staff, or to take any action that is your pleasure. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I think that your subcommittee is prepared to provide you an overview of the details of the recommendation they've developed.
Subcommittee.
Mayor Ruane, I believe Irene and I would both like to share some, we both like to share some of our thoughts in, on the process, and, and then go into the details of what we're proposing. In opening, I just wanted to express my gratitude to the members of the public that attended the meeting and those that have provided their input via email or phone calls to let us know what, what they feel are the, the best uses of, of the money. I also wanted to offer my personal apology to anyone who feels that our delay in getting this out may have caused them undue hardship. It certainly wasn't our intent. I mentioned during that meeting that the, the purpose of the city, our mission, is to serve the public, and that's certainly something that we, we try to do to the best of our ability. And if, if we failed in that, I certainly am sorry for that. As the city manager mentioned, the, the message that came through loud and clear was that there is a need for financial assistance in the area, and we heard it a lot of different ways, and certainly that, that is what Irene and I went back when we had our discussion, that it was certainly our, our mission was to, to address that, that one issue. We acknowledge that, that it is our responsibility to do what we feel is the best solution for the city, and even after getting all that input, our, our job, I don't think, was any easier. The recommendations were all over the map, and we had to make some, some hard decisions. But I believe that the proposal that we're bringing here tonight is, is fair and is a very well-thought-out plan that will address a lot of the concerns that we heard that night. Irene, do you want to?
Yes, thank you. Again, I also like to thank everyone who participated, and I particularly would like to thank the people who were in the minority. It's not easy to stand up in front of a group and say your opinion about something that you know may not be what the rest of the people are excited about. So, there's a little saying I keep telling myself, because I sometimes am in that. It says, "Let me speak out even if my voice shakes." So, I hope we all remember that, and I hope the people who are in the minority also are gracious enough to listen to the others. It was a vigorous and exciting, actually, discussion between the people who came to the meeting and then between Michael and myself afterwards. We even, even us came from two different sides and had our work, to work our way to the middle to what we're bringing forward tonight. Before we go on, though, and I know people are taking notes, so I want to make sure we add this, there's a provision in there about putting aside a certain amount of money. We would like to recommend to the council that we make a commitment to have that money spent within the next six months. So, that should be added to the paper that you have in front of you. And do you want to go, do the particulars?
Sure. We can step through.
Okay.
So, the recommendation that we're bringing tonight to the council is that we establish three categories. The first category would include the 38 properties that were completely destroyed and demolished. The second category would include 17 properties which sustained moderate damage, and finally 45 properties which sustained some minor damage. The formula we came up with would allocate $6,000 to the properties in the first category of demolished homes, $4,000 to the residents in the second category, and $1,000 to be distributed to the people in the final category. As Irene mentioned, there would be a, a fund set aside with the remainder of that, which is approximately equal to $58,000, which we then would commit to, to distribute via a process- is approximately equal to $58,000, which we then would commit to distribute via a process where we would solicit input to find the best use of those funds so that the remainder of the people in the neighborhood and anyone who was not specifically addressed in the first three categories would have access to some of that money. And as Irene mentioned, we would commit to making some resolution to the use of that fund within six months so that it doesn't get delayed any more than necessary. There's also a provision in the, in the staff report that includes an option to opt out. If someone feels that they do not need the funds, then that money would come back and become part of the pool again.
Okay. So, the other pieces that we have down there, it's, we felt that if only residents resided in the property at the time of the fire, the renters should receive the monies. If the property owner resided in the property and also had renters, the property owner would be expected to share the disbursement with the renters, and the disbursement would be limited time offer. So, if you, everyone will be notified, and then if you decide to opt out, if you don't need the money personally, again, as Michael said, it would go back into the fund and would be redispersed. So, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Iber or Mr. Medina?
Yes, please. First of all, it was a tough job.
That's an understatement.
Yes. I was, I was telling Councilmember Medina that I was very cautious in, when I was reading this, and I was very pleasantly surprised that you did come up with a good, what appears to be a good formula. My first concern is that there's thirty-eight properties we know that were destroyed as a result of the fire, but we also know that there are, we've approved three more homes to be demolished, so...
Those three homes are included in this thirty-eight. It was thirty-five, and then the other three were added.
Thirty-five and thirty-eight?
Yeah.
I thought it was thirty-eight plus three.
No, it's thirty-five plus three.
Okay. So, as long as, yeah. And then it's just a matter of what is moderate and what's minor.
This...
And, and let me just, and does that incorporate everyone that, is that a realistic number as far as what, who has been affected out there? I know there are residents that are still displaced, and they may be displaced out of their home, but may be classified as minor damage or something. There's been some confusion about yellow tag and that homes with yellow tags have yellow tags, but then there are still homes that have green tags where families are displaced. So, just want to know if that's, you know, if we're very clear on how many families are being affected and if that number is reflected in this calculation.
Do you want me to? We understand the confusion. We had originally talked about the red tag, yellow tag, and light green tag, but that's, the definition of those have been shifted around a bit. But this is a total of a hundred families, and it reflects, as far as we know, everyone who has been affected to any degree. That was one of the reasons Michael and I struggled with putting aside money, because if we miss somebody who is more impacted than the former tags indicated, they would have some, you know, we would have resourced, recourse to some money so that they could petition to say whatever they need to say. You know, they need X amount more, or there was more people in their home, or their home was more damaged than everyone thought, or any of those kinds of things. So, that's why we wanted to put some money aside.
Through the chair. I'm just going to ask a comment and a question because I want to hear from the residents that are here. First, I was asked by someone as to why I wasn't there on January 5th, and just as a follow-up, a subcommittee is two members of the council, which precludes the other three from being there that evening. So, I just wanted that, since somebody had asked me as to why I didn't show up that evening. The second thing was, there was some discussion early on and through the process of having some residents appointed also to the subcommittee to review the process and come up with a recommendation. Was that something that was done, going to be, or is, that was one question that I did have before. I'd like to hear from the public.
Do you want to?
Well, in terms of what we're proposing tonight, we wanted to make sure we address the immediate need first, and so that's what we're bringing here. We didn't go into detail in terms of how the remaining funds would be distributed, but I don't know if Irene agrees with me, but I think the idea there was that we would have a committee that included residents that would be responsible for making that determination.
That's, yes. I know originally we had thought of a subcommittee, I mean, a residents advisory committee, but I wanted, and Michael and I agreed, that we wanted to hear from the residents first before we set up an elaborate committee to do things that may not be necessary. So, since we heard loud and clear from the people that were at the meeting on the 5th that it would be easiest to disperse the money and let them decide what to do with it, that that's what we decided. That's why our recommendation is structured the way it is. So, the set aside money, the fifty-eight thousand plus, we would be looking for input either from, form another, like a subcommittee with advisory people and go from there. We haven't set that up yet, but as we said, we're committed to have it, either the money all spent or committed by the end of six months.
And I would assume the fifty-eight thousand if approved would also enable the unique circumstances that maybe aren't outlined in here thoroughly, and obviously there's a lot of situations that occurred that we're all learning about or may not fully know about, and there's privacy of folks that are affected. So, that would be something that could be utilized for those situations that arise that we haven't thought of or aren't black and white that are here.
Yes.
May fall in the gray area.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
That's one thing we struggled a great deal with.
Anything else? Well, first of all, I would like to thank everyone, and as the city manager said, people from around the world who donated to this, to this effort. This is truly incredible. To the residents for your input and your understanding, and to the subcommittee for doing a great job, a very, very tough job, because we know that not everyone's going to be happy with this, but that's just what we have to do. Not always happy with our decisions, anyway. This is only one of many things we have had to contend with and will have to contend with going down the road. The issue for me, the distribution of the money, and I struggled over it myself, was do you base it on need or do you base it on impact? And we have all seen in the last four months plus, the needs change. Everybody has their own story, everybody. Everybody got over the initial shock fairly quick, but then you get down to the individuals, and everybody has a different story. So, somebody might need the money, somebody might need it more than others, and others have told me, "That's fine, I'm just going to put it back in the kitty for others that might need it. I don't want it at all." So, I think they've made a very, the subcommittee along with the residents have made a very good contribution to the way we're going to disperse these funds. I really appreciate your efforts on this, and I think the only fair way to distribute the funds is based on the impact, which has to do with what you just said. Those that have been totally displaced, those that are partially displaced, and some of those that have some damage, but will be able to live in their homes now and get the damage repaired. So, and I do agree that a certain amount should be held back for extreme and extraordinary circumstances down the road that nobody knows about. Just a few weeks ago, we thought it was thirty-five homes. Now, it's thirty-eight, and we're hoping it's not going to be more. So, and I think that fifty-eight thousand, in fact, with the backfill of people that are opting out, and possibly with the funds from other nonprofits that have said, "Maybe we want to put it, we see how you, the city's going to distribute the money, maybe we'll put our money in with yours and make it a bigger kitty down the road." That remains to be seen, but we'll have to address that as it goes, and I'm happy to see that you're encouraged to get more input from the residents and probably start a small subcommittee to actually, these people are out there every day, their garage doors are open, people come up and they talk, and I think that's a good thing to get back to the subcommittee. So, I think you've done a great job, and I agree with your recommendations. Anybody from the public, this is a very important item. Would you like to speak to us about this?
Oh, come on, people.
Outstanding job.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you. Thank you. Well, we have the recommendation here, and...
Do you want to make comments?
Yeah. How about some action to the city manager's...
Pardon?
Yeah.
Well, it's all, it's all well said, and the thing is that on a smaller scale, in trying to distribute donations, we've got to meet some very extraordinary people, and you're all very extraordinary. You've been through a lot in this last four months, and you'd have to be in your position to really know what you've been through, and I don't even claim to know, you know, what you've been through. And I just have to say that someone that didn't lose their home, their home is actually being repaired, but he's in a hospital getting a transplant. So, what more can happen to a family, you know, after this tragedy? But life goes on, and I think six thousand is not going to help any, you know, not help repair your home, but it's going to help something, and that's all what we can do, six, five thousand, whatever. You've lost everything, some of you, and I, our hearts go out to you, and we'll be there for you as time goes on. So, I just feel that this is a good step. It's not a lot of money. You've got, it's a nice step in helping the recovery, and we're here to see that your lives do get repaired to some extent.
Did you have some? You need to go to the mic. It's okay.
I actually had a suggestion. As somebody who grew up in the neighborhood and has seen the severity of the area, why not start like a little fund for the people in the hospital that may have trouble paying their bill, medical bills, or something like that? You know, you mentioned there would be something like fifty thousand left over. That might be a good thing to put towards for the people like that.
And I think that's something that the subcommittee and the residents will work on, because as I said, there are other avenues for money also that are right around San Bruno. And just for the record, tell us your name and your street.
Sherry Sekulic, and I live at 1460 Claremont.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And while the speaker comes up, I think, for those that are injured, it's also important, but also there are eight, eight lives that were lost in this, so maybe that gets taken in consideration, too.
Good evening. My name's Roxana Damas, and I've been assisting the Alvarado family throughout this process, and one thing I'd like to point out is that language access has been an issue with some of the materials out there. I've been, I have staff that works with me and translates some materials to Spanish, but I'm assuming there may be other people out there with other language needs, and I'd like to make sure to point that out, not only for this process, for them to understand. It's really critical to see it in writing. I can talk to them all I want, but I know the family wants to understand what these points may be, so if that's a possibility, I'd like to encourage that. And also just to be very careful in hoping to explain and express more in detail what those fifty-eight thousand dollars would look, you know, what is an emergency need? How do we identify that? And I know the subcommittee will do that, but I think it's critical to be able to have a really good outline and have the information out there. So, that's my point. And thank you for your hard work.
Thank you very much. Two very good points, and we will, we will in fact encourage that on our website very shortly. Those are things that are unforeseen, and as I said, this is kind of a moving target, this whole thing. It's uncharted territory for us, so, right, very good. Thank you. Yes?
Hi, my name is Kristy Brush, and I have two comments I'd like to make. The first one is, I do understand that there are people who have had significant injuries or deaths who have not had major or even moderate property damage, and I don't know that that's taken into consideration with this, but if some consideration is given to funds for people who have suffered medical injuries, not all of them will have the capacity to receive the funds, so perhaps consideration will be given to giving the funds to their representative, be it the personal representative, a conservator if one is appointed, or a guardian. That's all.
All right, thank you. And those are the kind of things we want to hear so we can, we can address them in the future. And if you have any specifics on that, Tammy Yuki is here. She's our HR director, and she kind of coordinates with the city and the neighborhood, and you're welcome to talk to her after and give her any specifics. Okay? Thank you. To the city manager and the city attorney, what is the fastest way that we can write a check?
Writing the check is the easy part.
Something that can cash.
Well...
So, we don't step all over ourselves.
That is still the easy part. There are a couple of, there are several logistical issues. First, since it appears as if the council is prepared to accept this recommendation, and I'm assuming that your desire will be that we move forward as quickly as possible, I'm prepared to tell you that we anticipate being able to distribute the funds by the end of next week. What I would suggest to you is that there are a number of items that we want to troubleshoot and make sure that we have adequately covered the residents with a explanatory letter to accompany the check to confirm, for example, that the funds are given without any strings, if you will, you know, no specific expectations about what it's to be used for, that it's intended for disaster, to address the impacts of the disaster that have been experienced by the, by the residents. At this point, we're looking at a couple of different options about what would be the best way physically to distribute the monies. Obviously, we want to make sure that the person we're handing the check to is actually the right person, that that person has a, a comment was duly noted about representatives who have an official relationship with a particular individual or family who's entitled to the funds, but we are currently evaluating at this point. Our initial thought was to set up a process whereby people would be notified and asked to come to City Hall and to pick up the check, provide identification. Obviously, that will not work for everybody, and so we want to make sure that we can make those arrangements with individuals for whom that is not possible. And I would say those logistic considerations aside, we're prepared to move ahead as quickly as possible. We can, we have the records that identify who are the property owners. We do anticipate that there are a variety of contingency situations that we may have to troubleshoot one-on-one with some of the affected parties, but we believe that we have accurate information that will allow us to at least make initial contact with the affected parties and to move through those issues expediently.
Okay. Mr. Medina?
I was just going to say also, I'm sure the subcommittee not being there, but can only tell you that I'm sure it was a daunting task that you had, which to come together and try to form something to bring back to us this evening. And I also, again, as others have said, thank the residents. This is one thing that no one a year ago would have ever suspected or thought, or even could have imagined, could happen to this community or any community. And in a disaster and situation as such, I think truly it tests the leadership of a town, the ability of the staff, the courage of its residents, and the resolve of a community. And even with all that happened in this defining moment for this city, I think we did extremely well, and I think we all can be proud of ourselves, we can be proud of this community, and we can proud, be proud of San Bruno as our home. So, I want to thank everybody here tonight, those that showed up January 5th, and everyone who has supported and helped in any way they have throughout this whole crisis.
So, I will entertain a motion to accept the subcommittee's recommendation and direct the city manager to expedite the process as soon as possible. City attorney?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure that your motion tonight, because the process we're going to employ tonight is to rely on your motion to implement as quickly as possible so that before your next meeting, we can actually be well underway in this process, and then we're going to bring back the resolution that'll formalize what your motion was and incorporate the memorandum that you have tonight. So, I just want to make sure that your motion tonight includes some of the changes you discussed... discussed, such as the six months, and make sure that, and that there'll be a committee that will be formed to review it. That way, we can incorporate those things in the resolution that you'll see next time, but we can make sure that we have, staff has the authority to move forward with your direction.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
I, I think I heard you right, but, and I know there's going to be a formal resolution, but we're talking about trying to distribute money before we approve the formal resolution.
That's correct. That's why I want to make sure your motion gives us the direction to do that.
Okay.
So I then would like to introduce, or actually make a motion to accept the recommendation from the subcommittee with the proposed changes, including that we would give ourselves a six-month window to complete the process. And that would be pending the formal proclamation at our following meeting.
Is the motion on the table? Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Through the chair, Mr. Mayor. And just for a final, thanks to the hundreds of those who have donated to this cause. Individuals, businesses, organizations, and everything, it's just, it's been a, it's been a wonderful thing, and it's still coming in. And hopefully, there'll be more.
Thank you all very much. You're more than welcome to stay for our business.
Or not.
Why don't we just take a two-minute break and let the room clear? Thank you. Thank you.
[inaudible]
Subcommittee, it's a tough one. Thank you. Good to see you.
Thank you for coming.
Let's go, rock star.
Like to get the council back to the dais, please.
They don't, Gary, Gary, they don't know what they're missing. They just don't know what they're missing.
We're going to read word by word.
Okay. I will make a motion to...
Thank you. I'd like to call a meeting back to order on item 10C, which is receiver report, waive the first reading, introduce 2010 fire and building code ordinances to be adopted by reference, and set the public hearing for adoption and adopt the resolution approving findings of necessity and need for amendments, deletions, and additions to the code. Staff report, please.
Thank you, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. As the council may remember, every three years, the State of California puts forward a new California Building Code series and encodes a number of code books, the mechanical code, the plumbing code, the building code, all of which are mentioned in the staff report. In addition to requiring that each city implement this code, the state also allows each city to adopt local amendments based on local climatic, geological, and geological needs, and topographical needs as well. In addition to those amendments, at this time, the state is also adopting a new green code. It's the first, we're the first state in the country to adopt a green code, and the state's allowing each city to adopt a certain tier of that code. And the council remembers just a couple weeks ago, they instructed staff to go ahead and put forward Tier One of the green building code, which is a little bit higher than the mandatory building code. There are about 10 to 20 amendments that are also included in your staff report. These are all based on, based on needs in local San Bruno. I won't go over all of them, many of which were included in the last code cycle, but they're all listed in your staff report. A few highlights of them, you, everybody knows, as you're near the airport area, it's very noisy, there's a requirement for sound insulation when you're in certain noise contour zones. This has been in the local building code for decades. There's a provision which allows the building and fire, building official and fire marshal to require certain building materials when constructing near a wildlife urban interface zone. An example of this, if you live next to a eucalyptus grove, you could not use a combustible roofing material. So just logical things that we're able to implement through this code. Other things are requiring reinforced foundations and a prohibition of using drywall for lateral support. That may be appropriate in some parts of the country that aren't earthquake country, but here, you do want additional lateral support and reinforcement. There's also a few fire department local amendments, some are standpipe systems. These are similar to the systems that are hooked up at the crossing, giving the ability to hook a fire hose up directly on each level of a multifamily complex. One final one is actually probably help us out in the code enforcement arena as well, is that you cannot use carports or garages and multifamily dwelling units as storage or for combustible storage. So, you know, that has been a problem in some places, so we wanted to make sure that it was represented here in the code. I do have Gary Laporia, who's our building official, as well as George Devendorf here, who is the fire marshal. And one important thing to note, I think, is that Gary and George worked hand-in-hand with the other building officials and with the other fire marshals in Samhail County to really get these codes all in line. So these aren't things that are unique to San Bruno, these are things that are being adopted countywide. So there is some consistencies for homeowners and contractors and business owners throughout Samhail County. One thing we should note is that something that's unique about this type of ordinance, we're adopting this ordinance by reference. So what that means is, in addition to our local amendments, we're referring to a different code. In this case, we're referring to the state code. In these circumstances, you have the public hearing on the second, during the second reading. And there also is a specific noticing requirement where you have to notice it twice in the paper, and they have to be separated by a certain amount of days. So because of that, the next possible public hearing would be the February 8th hearing. So with that, staff is recommending that the city council waive the first reading of this ordinance, set the public hearing date for February 8th, and adopt the attached resolution with, which has the necessity findings for these amendments. And it's also noting that this resolution will not have to be adopted during the second reading.
Okay. Any questions?
Through the chair. I had a quick question. On page 61, it mentions fire hydrant maintenance specifies that when a fire hydrant are located on private property, they must be maintained by the private property owner. My understanding is, it's just not, somebody driving down the street and sees it on the front lawn, that it's not in reference to that, but could you clarify that, since obviously, I think most people would believe that that references them?
Absolutely. What, when you see a fire hydrant in the front yard, that is not actually, that is not actually on private property. Within San Bruno, the public right-of-way extends anywhere from two and a half feet to five and a half feet, seven and a half feet in from the back edge of the sidewalk. So that's all still public right-of-way. What this is referring to is developments with private roads. So the crossing, Skycrest, developments like that where there's the private roads, that these would be maintained by the HOA or the private development.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Through the chair. Speaking with the building official, and I guess during the presentation at the last meeting, there was reference, obvious reference to the new green code, and how that would go in effect for new construction, new commercial and new residential. And so there's a question as far as new. Many interpret new as from the ground up, but then there's also references in jurisdictions that the extent, more than 50% of a, of a structure that gets altered or remodeled constitutes new. So need to know what's happening with that, if there's a definition in the code for that, or is it just ground up?
Correct. There were a few cities within Samhail County that decided to adopt something that said if you were expanding your home by 50%, or if you were demolishing 50% of the walls, and there was kind of a complicated equation that got you to what was new, which basically made almost any time you build a home or you remodel a significant portion of the home, that you would have to go back into your existing home and remodel it all that as well and bring that up to code. We did not think that was appropriate at this time, so we did not bring that forward. So I think new is new. So if you're doing an addition to your home, that doesn't count as new. But if you are tearing down your home and rebuilding, that is going to be a new structure. So it's consistent with what we've been, have been interpreting as new over the years, but it's nothing going back and upgrading existing buildings.
My last question is that, obviously, we have 38 new homes for sure that are going to, or not for sure, but are potentially going to be built in our community in the Glenview area. And was there any concern that these new guidelines, this new code, would be, would pose some sort of hardship or undue strain on their, on their budget as far as compliance?
Well, I would say if we were, if we were acquiring something outside the code, then yes. But since insurance policies do pay for code upgrades, as long as this is within our code, the insurance companies will pay for those code upgrades. What I think we have to pay particular attention to, though, is guiding these homeowners to make their architects, make their designers understand exactly what we mean by Tier One green building codes, and they're able to implement those easily.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Action?
Through the chair. I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading.
Second.
Motion, second, to waive the first reading. On the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to adopt the resolution, to adopt the ordinances. I think, I guess that's right.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Any other actions needed?
To set the public hearing date.
Okay. And that will, would be?
February 8th.
Okay.
And?
Need a motion?
Aye.
Okay. Someone?
Some moved.
Second.
Motion, second, to set the public hearing date to February 8th, 2011. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Done. D. Adopt a resolution amending the 2011, 10-11 capital improvement to add the swimming pool resurfacing project and appropriating funds in the amount of $120,000. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, Danielle Brewer, our Record Services Manager, will be giving the report tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. Before you tonight is a staff recommendation to appropriate money from the equipment reserve for the resurfacing of the City Park swimming pool. City Park swimming pool is approximately 51 years old. The fiberglass coating around the pool has not been replaced since sometime in the early 1980s, despite having a 15-year lifespan, and it's now beginning to bubble and peel away from the pool walls, allowing black algae to form. Besides making it very difficult to clean, it's also allowing the water to seep behind the pool lining and cause damage. If council approves funding, staff will request bids from qualified companies and bring them to city council for approval next month. March is the optimal time of year to begin work, as it's anticipated to be a six-week project, and the pool is scheduled to open for staff training in Mar, in May and June to the public. The project is estimated to cost $120,000. To fund this project, staff recommends the use of the remaining $30,000 from the Prop. 40-2002 Bond Act. Additional funding will be taken from a previous recreation project in the equipment reserve that's overfunded by $150,000. And I'm available for questions.
Any questions of Danielle?
Through the chair, real quick. So the Catalpa lot paving has been, those monies are being reassigned to this project?
Correct.
Would that be fair?
Correct.
And then I'm, just in case I read it wrong, on the resolution, on one of the whereas's, it says the county earmarked to replace the City Park gym floor are not anticipated necessary for the next 15 years. Is that also part?
Correct. 15 to 20 years. Correct.
Just keep doing that good. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Action?
I'll go ahead and introduce the resolution for adoption, please.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item 10E, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Cablecom of California, Inc. in the amount of $64,006 for construction of the Bay Hill Sneed Lane cable extension project. Tenza.
Honorable Mayor, members of city council, good evening. The item before you is a request for authorization to award contract to Cablecom of California, Inc. for the construction of the cable department's Bay Hill Sneed Lane cable extension project. The Bay Hill Sneed Lane cable extension project is a component of the proposed commercial data and phone services project included in the 2010-11 CIP budget. The purpose of this project is to continue the expansion of the cable plant to key commercial areas in San Bruno. At the present time, nine office complexes at the Bay Hill Office Park and four office complexes at the San Bruno Office Park on Sneed Lane, among other business corridors, are on the city's fiber network. At last count, there were 83 businesses located within the nine complexes at Bay Hill and 41 businesses within the four complexes at San Bruno Office Park. The proposed Bay Hill Sneed Lane cable extension project will extend the cable plant to five additional complexes at Bay Hill and to the VA Building and Airport Trade Center on Sneed Lane. There are 56 businesses within the five additional complexes at Bay Hill, 13 businesses at the VA Building, and 19 businesses at the Airport Trade Center. At the completion of this project, a total of 212 businesses, San Bruno businesses, will be on the city's fiber network and have access to the city's value-priced commercial services. I also want to point out that at this, at this time, there are at least, there's at least a 25% vacancy rate at the Bay Hill Office Park. As the economy improves, the occupancy rate should improve. The department will be in a position to handle that change when that occurs. Since the beginning of the fiscal year, San Bruno Cable has been steadily adding new commercial customers. The department is receiving new service requests daily. These requests are coming from both within the existing footprint of the fiber network and also from the proposed construction areas. San Bruno Cable serves 17% or 14 out of the, out of the 83 businesses located at Bay Hill that's currently on the fiber network. San Bruno also serves 17% or seven of the 41 businesses at San Bruno Office Park on Sneed Lane. The services subscribed by business customers range from basic cable, phone, internet services to IP PBX and dedicated internet access services. These customers individually pay anywhere between $480 to $9,000 annually for their services. To apprise the city council of what we're doing at each building, I'll say that we generally begun the process with a service request from one customer and then have slowly generated growth within the complex by word of mouth. In one case, the property management company sent a notice to all its tenants informing them about the availability of our services. As an example, there are six businesses located at a complex at Thousand Cherry Avenue. We began there with a service request from one business, and today we're serving three out of the six businesses in that complex. As another example, there are 29 businesses located at 1111 Bay Hill, and today we're serving four out of the 29 businesses there. I offer these statistics and examples to demonstrate that we are steadily making progress in delivering cities, the city's commercial services. Other than updating the department's website and using word of mouth, we withheld from any major marketing outreach efforts since the fiber network was not fully complete. We do not want to raise customer expectations and then not be in a position to deliver services in timely manner. Upon the completion of this proposed project, key commercial areas in San Bruno will be on the fiber network, permitting staff to conduct a widely distributed marketing campaign. The construction work on the Bay Hill Sneed Lane cable extension project will comprise of trenching, boring, laying conduit systems, installing underground utility vaults, pulling fiber optic and coaxial cabling, and fiber splicing. Upon completion of the installation of the cable plant into the main point of entry rooms at these complexes, cable technicians will follow up with installation of service taps and data switches for turning up new customers. And based on the value of this project, the city issued a bid, a notice to bidders. The bid was advertised in the local paper and was directly sent to three construction companies. The city received two bids. Cablecom of California, Inc. submitted the low bid in the amount of $63,006. Dalio, Inc. submitted the second bid in the amount of $91,457. The city has experience working with Cablecom. It is a contractor that worked on the reconstruction of the cable infrastructure that was damaged at the Glenview Fire. The contractors' work on that project was satisfactory. Staff recommends city council adopt resolution authorizing award of contract to Cablecom of California in the amount of $63,006 to construct the proposed Bay Hill Sneed Lane extension project. Alternatively, the city council may direct staff to rebid the project. I'll take any questions you may have at this time.
Any questions of staff? Through the chair. Michael?
If I understood correctly, that you have some customers identified in these new locations?
We have some customers that are, that have requested services in the new, new areas, and we've held, told them to wait till we can bring services to their facilities, yeah.
And, and in terms of the number of customers that would be required for this investment to be profitable, or?
Yeah. So basically, on 63, we're looking at bringing about 88 businesses online with the $63,000 investment. So on a per-unit basis, we're looking at about $700 per unit. What we do generally, part of, just, we charge an access fee for the construction work and also for, for installing the, the main equipment, the main data switches in these locations. So if you look at a, say, 50% penetration rate, and at a $700 per unit cost, we're looking at about a $1,400 cost per, per new customer. So when we charge $100 per month for access charge, we're looking at about a 14-month payback for those, for those new installations. So that's sort of what we're counting on. And our, our commercial project, we're looking at a five-year horizon in terms of, you know, getting fully, fully, reaching a higher penetration rate. So at least, if you're looking at a payback of at least 14 months, you know, we're doing, I think it's a fairly good payback, quick payback.
Thank you. Any questions?
Through the chair. So, so it begs the question, what are they getting that they don't already have? Because I'm sure they have service now from other vendors.
Basically, the, the position that the services that San Bruno, the city has decided to offer is a value, value-oriented pricing. The, the pricing that the customers are paying today in the market are high, like, say, for example, if somebody were to get a T1, they're looking at $300 upwards of that in terms for that pricing. As a ethernet service provider, that we have, the approach that we have taken, we're able to acquire bandwidth at a reasonable price, and since we don't have a profit, sort of, quote-unquote, public, a private profit margin motive, motivation, we're able to competitively price our product and offer a very attractive price, pricing to our customers. And that's what's really driving our business.
And it's not just a temporary rate?
It's not just a temporary, exactly, exactly. So I think a lot of the new tenants moving into the business parks are actually inquiring of the property management, and a lot of the property managers call us, and they provide the lead, in some cases, for these new, new services. So it's been going really well.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Action?
Through the chair, I'll introduce the resolution for adoption.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item number 11, report of commissions, boards, committees, their honor reports this evening. Item 12, comments from council members.
Through the chair.
Mr. Ibera?
I just want to thank, personally thank Randy Schwartz and the, and the city staff for accommodating the long-term recovery groups and the nonprofits and the volunteers for Saturday's successful Glenview gathering. It, it happened so quick. We, we had a meeting a week ago, Monday, and we got it together, and we, we took care of our residents, and I was very proud to be a part of it. And we look forward to maybe one in spring. Definitely one in spring. But, so thank you, Randy, and, and the staff for putting that together.
Good.
And the Red Cross.
And all the other civic organizations, like the Lions, the Rotary, and all the other folks in the community that came together, participated, and offered their time and their support. I know you don't want to touch one of them.
It was very good and very well received. Good job. Closed session. Item 13, we have three items in a closed session. The first one is to confer with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. One case, California Government Code, Section 54954.9A. Item B, the city manager and human resources director request a closed session pursuant to California Government Code, Section 54957.6, regarding direction for labor negotiations with the police and public safety mid-management unit, bargaining units. And item C, confirm with legal counsel regarding pending litigation in Timsters Local 856 versus City of San Bruno et al., San Mateo Superior Court Case Number CIV 501642. We will adjourn this meeting to the next city council meeting in January 25th, 2011, right here, and I would like to adjourn this meeting in memory of, of the people that were actually killed this last weekend in Tucson, Arizona. We have experienced four months ago a tragedy in our community that was, in fact, a flash in just a moment, and the same thing happened in a different way, and at a Safeway parking lot in Tucson this weekend, a congresswoman was, was almost assassinated, and six people died, and a lot of people are in the hospital, and I think it's appropriate that we close this, this meeting in their memory. I thank you, and this meeting is adjourned.